Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Tuesday, November 10th meeting that I would like to call to order. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? So it's no secret that the way we have been asked to live over the last eight months has taken so much from us. Our social bubbles are, I should put my headpiece on, that might be an issue. There. I don't know if that works. I forgot to put my, there we go. Sorry about that, people. Anyway, it is no secret that the way we've been asked to live over the last eight months has taken so much from us. Our social bubbles are much smaller than many of us are used to. Many of the events and traditions that we look forward to and are involved in have been put on hold for the foreseeable future. One of the traditions that we all look forward to would have been today, and that is the annual student visit to our county council meeting. We always look forward to welcoming students from across the county in partnership with our local optimist clubs. These students are treated to a tour of our wonderful building and then participate in a mock council meeting. It is a shame that this year, this event could not happen. As someone who participated in a similar event so many years ago with the city of London, I always look, look at the students with a sense of hopefulness for the future as I am confident that out of the group that visits us, many will become community leaders. Fingers crossed that next year, we can welcome them back. November has become the month to focus on men's health, both physical and mental. As the mother of four boys, now men, I can, I am keenly aware of this focus. As I have highlighted many times during these stressful times we find ourselves living in, added attention to our mental health and well-being is paramount, especially for men. There seems to be added pressure to have it all together, to have it all figured out. As the mother of a son who struggles daily with depression, I implore you to reach out to the men in your life, to check in on them, to ensure they are looking after their mental health. There are many resources available online through many local organizations. Please take the time to do your research and find those research to support your male loved ones. At the very least, regularly check in with them so they know they have a safe and supportive sounding board. Tomorrow is Remembrance Day, and to no one's surprise, it will look very different this year. Most legions are discouraging public participation in services. That doesn't mean that services are not happening across our county. I know our municipalities have been working with our legions to ensure that there are virtual opportunities to watch local services. Depending on how our services have been changed, some of us may still be involved. And what an honor that is. If you will not be involved in a service and to our residents, I would like to encourage you to take the time to make it a priority, to pay your respects to those that have gone before us. We have talked a lot about what has been taken from us this year, what sacrifices we have had to make for community. And I think we can all agree that what we've been asked to do this year is nothing compared to those who serve community and country beyond what should be expected from anyone. The roles that we are honored to have, to represent our communities, to make decisions that shape our communities, to sit around the horseshoe, no matter what it looks like. To be leaders is because of sacrifices for country that were made. The freedoms we are privileged to have because of their sacrifices should never be taken for grant, granted or forgotten. Okay, moving on to the business of our meeting. Business arising from the minutes, I haven't been notified of anything that wants to be spoken to. You've got the minutes from our meeting on October 27th. Unless anything needed to be amended, I would look for a mover and a seconder to approve those as circulated. Counselor Mayhew and Counselor Richards. All opposed. And that's carried. We have no deputations, any inquiries or notices of motion. Reports. And into new business, and we have Chief Neil Roberts joining us with an annual report with regards to the EMS offload delay nurse program. Chief Neil.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good afternoon, counsel. So the report that's before you today is the report that we bring every year, and it deals with the provision of funds from the province to support the EMS offload nurse program in contract with London Health Sciences. Of note that the funding envelope, which was received recently in the amount of seven, sorry, $676,448 allows us to staff nurses at both the University Hospital site and the Victoria Hospital site, 16 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days per year. This amount of hours and the total funding envelope is consistent from last year and the prior year, so it's maintained, it's the amount of hours as well as the, the funding dollars itself. Overall, provincially, there is a $60 million pot which comes from money, and that has not changed, but has been consistent. So we are proposing the agreement which is attached, and again, that is the agreement that has been used in the last couple of years. Nothing really has changed, dollars haven't changed, hours haven't changed, the language hasn't changed. And we're seeking approval from county council for the warden and the county clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of Middlesex County. Madam Warren, I'm happy to take any questions that counsel may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks for that, Neil. Any questions for the chief, Counselor Vanderheiden?
Thank you to the warden. I have no problem supporting this. I think it's really an important initiative, so thank you for the update on that. Could you let us know a little bit about, is this still being as successful as it has been? I know that along the way, we've had some issues with, you know, the nurses being pulled away to two different floors, et cetera, et cetera. Is this enough? Is this, is this where we need to be, or is there something else that we need to be looking at? So there's kind of a bunch of questions there, but if you could just sort of highlight Chief Roberts on that question.
Thank you, through your Madam Warden, Counselor Vanderheiden. So the, the amount that we have right now is for 16 hours per site. I know in the past year or two, we, we did ask for 24 hours. We did not get that, but to be fair, no one else in the province got any increase in hours. So we believe the province is reevaluating this program to see how they can better fine tune it. With respect to nurses being pulled, that has improved, but we are still seeing every now and then when the nurse is being pulled because there are short nurses in the emergency department. And so they're reallocating the resources to priority areas. Again, that has decreased, but certainly it is a risk. And so we're seeing, overall, the program is helpful. We're, we're back to seeing even in surge two now, an increase in offload delays in times where we saw it earlier in the year when sort of phase one or peak one, that COVID saw a decrease in our call volume and a decrease of people coming into merge departments. We, we didn't see all those as much, but we're, we're now back into prior year levels with regards to seeing, I guess, increased activity in the merge department.
Any other questions for Neil on this? Okay, seeing none, you do have a motion in front of you that I would ask for a mover and seconder. Counselor Vanderheiden and Counselor Ropp. All opposed. And that's carried. Moving on, we've got a road maintenance agreement with Perth County. So Chris, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. And I have two reports that are quite similar. And I, before I gave my reports, I just wanted to give a big thank you to Marcy Evenich from our legal department who put in a lot of hours on both of these agreements over the last few weeks. Just some challenges with getting these put together in time for the winter season. I'm happy to say we haven't, other than a little dusting of snow, these are both in plenty of time for us to keep our roads maintained this coming winter. So the first one, both of these are actually related to the county road assumption study that was completed earlier this year. And these are agreements to cover off the boundary road, which is Whalen Line, and it shares between Middlesex County, municipality South Perth and Perth County, or excuse me, municipality South Huron and Perth County. So the first report you're seeing is for the agreement with Perth County. Middlesex and Perth have had a longstanding winter maintenance agreement. You can see from later on in the details of the schedules of the agreement, Perth County has provided us winter maintenance on Prospect Hill Road for many, many years. Just a difficult road for our staff to access, and it will continue to be so. And so we are actually proposing to maintain Whalen Line, their section of the boundary road. And we will just redistribute the costs at the end of the year. So I'm just recommending that this agreement be approved for a 10-year term. Happy to answer any questions.
Did you, did you want to speak to the, the South Huron one at the same time then? And then questions can be, are probably related to both.
Certainly. So South Huron, a little bit different. There was some discussion at Huron County of Whalen Line being assumed by, at the county level as well on the other side of the boundary. Those discussions and their council decided not to do that at this point in time. So this was a whole new agreement we needed to work out with municipality of South Huron. And they agreed that it would be better for the county Middlesex to maintain this section of road through the entirety of the year, and we will simply charge them 50% of our maintenance costs on an annual basis for the maintenance of Whalen Line from Highway four down to Mitchell Line, which is Highway 23 for summer and winter maintenance. And again, the recommendation is a 10-year term for this agreement as well.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Any questions on those two agreements? Okay, seeing none, I would ask for a mover and a seconder for the first agreement with Perth County then. Counselor Cord Yelson. And Counselor Warwick. All opposed. And that's carried. And then for the agreement with South Huron, mover and seconder. Counselor Elliott and Counselor DeVet. All opposed. And that's carried. Thank you very much. Okay, Kathy. With the update to our procedural for the inaugural and proxy voting. And I think it's going to be a tag team with Kathy and Wayne on this one, I believe. Yeah.
So typically, at the November, first meeting in November, we normally invite in all our past wardens, long service employees, and we have a dinner. And then following dinner, any candidate that wants to announce their intention to run for warden does so. But with COVID, we're not having a dinner, we can't invite people in. So Wayne and I got together and came up with a couple options to make things a little easier. So what we're proposing is that if someone is interested in running for warden, putting their name forward, they would do so at the very end of today's meeting under number 14. So on the inaugural date, we've given you two options. If only one person announces their intention to run for warden, we are proposing that we would hold the inaugural following the November 24th meeting just because of time. If we were to just have one person run, I would think the inaugural might take 20 minutes at the most. So we're trying to combine things. If two people were to announce, then we would stay with the December 3rd date, and the process would be the same, except it would be virtual. Does any one have any questions on that so far?
Counselor Vanderheiden.
Thank you through the warden. Just, just one thing, and I'm, I'm not going to run, just so you know that right off the bat. I just had a concern, and I shared it with Bill last night, that the, the last paragraph on page one, where it says, "Do so at a council meeting or on or prior to the second week of November." I think that needs to be changed in wording for me to accept that because that shows, if anybody was reading that down the road, and, and it, it means that nobody's had any opportunity because we're just supporting this report today. Nobody's had opportunity before today to do anything, to think about it, to know that, other than when you read your documents last night or the night before, that this was going to be on here. So I, I just don't think that at a council meeting on or prior to the second week of November works because this is that meeting, there's no other opportunity. So logistically, just, just wordsmithing that, I, I just find that we, if we accept this, then we're, we're doing the wrong thing. If you know, do you understand what I mean?
Sorry, which page was that again?
That was on page one of eight, and that's the last paragraph where it says, "The first of two recommendations is that anyone wishing to announce their intention to let their name stand for the position, do so at a council meeting on or prior to the second week of November." Well, it's already the second week in November, so nobody can do it prior to. So that part of the sentence has to come out because you can't at this stage, unless you're working on this for next term. It doesn't work.
Okay, I can, I can remove that.
One, one point of order there through Madam Warden to the counselor. The reason that came up was because I'm understanding that, that there's a difference between announcing that when counselors announce their intention to let their name stand versus nomination. The announcement for the name usually is done at the dinner, and then the actual nomination to, to be the warden is done at the inaugural. So the, the, and I'm understanding the dinner usually happens, Kathy, when does the dinner usually happen? Happens before the inaugural, correct?
Would have been this evening.
Right, so that's why the idea was to have, have the announcement be today, to keep that regular timeline in the event that the counselors are able to indicate today if they're interested or not. I believe staff did receive some indications from some counselors that everyone knew what they were thinking at this time. If, if that's not the case, then I think certainly we'd have to put it to another meeting. But in the event that counsel, counselors today did know that they, if they're interested or not in running, and there was only one person who wanted to run, then we could indicate today that we would move the, the inaugural to the 24th. But if council doesn't know that right now, then it looks like the inaugural will have to be on the third.
But if we follow, sorry, if I could follow up, if we follow that recommendation, then no one else after today can put their name forward. So it's today or nothing.
There could be a nomination, because sometimes there are nominations. But typically, I'm thinking council wouldn't normally make somebody run if they don't want to run. So if council does know today that there's only one person running, then they can indicate that today and move the inaugural to the 24th. But if there's uncertainty about that point, then we will have to wait and see how the nominations come in.
Okay, Kathy, did you have any other thing more occurred, or Counselor Smith, did you have a question?
Through the warden, just a comment, just in the recommendation that's on the report there. Just wanted to note that it says Thursday, November 24th, but I think that should be Tuesday, November 24th, just to make sure we have that right in the minutes if that's what is moved and seconded.
Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so any, I guess, any other questions on the inaugural part? And then Kathy can continue on with her report.
Okay, the proxy voting. At the October 13th meeting, a motion was approved to defer the proxy voting form pending more information. When the province approved its second round of COVID-19 municipal act amendments, they inserted the proxy voting availability part so that it would be part with the permanent virtual meeting availability. As a result, proxy allowance was approved by county council on July 28th with the virtual meeting amendment. So after the form was devised, Counselor Vanderheiden did have a question about wanting more information. So one of the reasons that we believe the province put this in place was for people who had internet difficulties, who could not vote at meetings. And so they figured the technology might not be able to work for everyone, so they were giving everyone another option for voting. We have been getting some feedback that council is not interested in the proxy voting, and that is fine, we can amend the rules procedure and remove it. It is council's choice whether they leave it or remove it. Wayne, did you have anything else?
No, I, I think that's fine, not unless there's any specific questions. I think otherwise, everything's in the report.
Okay, any questions on that, clarifications? Okay, so, um. With that, then there is a recommendation in front of you with regards to both updates. I get asked for a mover and seconder on that.
Oh, sorry. All right, could I read it just because we, I get a little wordsmithing? So if I could read it out to everyone?
Absolutely.
The rules of procedure, number one, inaugural meeting and election of the warden be amended. The rules of procedure be amended to delete section 39, proxy voting. That the date of the Middlesex County Council inaugural be scheduled for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, following the regular meeting, if only one candidate announces their intention at the end of today's meeting. And the attached bylaw should be presented to county council for approval, and that the warden and the clerk are authorized to execute the bylaw.
Any questions on that motion, the way that it's read?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Counselor Warwick, yep.
Through, through you, you weren't, with that motion, is the proxy included on it? Is that withdrawn in the bylaws? Is it separate, or is it part of that motion?
Section 39 is the proxy voting.
Got it.
That is to remove it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? I, I don't mean to confuse things at, at this time, but I guess to Counselor Vanderheiden's point, should there be something in there? I get with regards to announcements and then being nominated because the, the, we would, we still have to go through the formal nomination process. And that looks through this, that'll happen on the 24th. So if three people get nominated, then are we, then we would be having a meeting on the 5th and not doing it on the 24th? Is that my understanding, Kathy?
No. We can have three people nominated. But if two decline.
Okay, so I guess to that point, if three people say yes, they want to run two weeks from now, then the process would happen as scheduled on the 5th or whatever that Thursday is, right?
Right.
So could we add the word nominated in that motion? Does, does that work for you, Counselor Vanderheiden? Does that kind of?
Now, it wasn't clear about announcement and nominations. Like, I didn't get that out of the, out of the original motion at all, so that makes sense.
And does that work, Wayne, from a?
Well, I guess what we had been informed of by some counselors is that the announcement, which is not the nomination, could be known today so that staff would know how many individuals were interested in running, which if it was only one, then we could put the inaugural to the 24th, where if it was going to be more than one, we would have to do December 3rd. So I think Kathy, that's is what you were interested in knowing today from council, correct?
Yes.
So it's that question we were looking to the answer for. In the event council doesn't have an answer for that today, I think if you could let us know, we could adapt accordingly.
But that won't happen until after the meeting, like at the end of the meeting. So. Counselor DeVet.
Thank you through you, I guess, to Wayne or Kathy. The announcements happen traditionally at this meeting in the evening. There is, I don't think there's any change to the nomination procedure. We're not changing our normal practice, are we? We normally have an opportunity to nominate on the day of the vote, but that doesn't change the date of anything subsequent. That, that, that has always happened that way, has it not?
Yes, it's just been at the dinner instead of during the council meeting.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
My experience of 30 years, I have never had anyone not announce at the first meeting in November and, and run the date of the inaugural. I have never heard of that happening. I mean, it could, but.
Yeah, so I guess my question really is, do we need to do any kind of word, wordsmithing with respect to nominations because that procedure is not changing? This is amending to reflect the current state for this meeting and moving forward with inaugural and/or the time between those events. Okay, thank you. I, I don't mean to be difficult, Madam Warden, but there is a change there, and that's the change that after today, no one else can run. It's done. That last line there says, "Announcements without this amendment, counselors have up until voting at the inaugural to let their name stand." That's a slight change, that will not, that's the change, Counselor DeVet. So there is a change there, and I'm not saying anybody will, or I, I'm, I'm assuming today there will only be one, but that's an assumption. So, but that says no one else can run after today.
That's right. Joanne's right about that, Warden. The, and that's exactly what we were asked to do. We were asked at the last meeting to think forward of what that would look like and whether we would need an inaugural. If there was only one person that put their name forward for warden, how would you then create a process that then you wouldn't have an inaugural? And so, but Joanne's right in that we would, if, if we thought that there was someone that may put their name forward, but also want to run, or not put their name forward, but want to run after today, then we should just go forward with the regular inaugural process and have a meeting, have a 20-minute meeting and get it over with. We're just doing, we're just giving you the option that you asked for at the last meeting. If, if you want to use it, great, and if you don't, don't use it because then we're, we're going to have a problem. But Joanne's exactly right. I mean, after, what we're asking you to do is say, can you tell us today? Can we make a decision that we won't have an inaugural based upon not the nominations, but the announcements today? And that's a bit of a administrative risk, but it's one we're asking based upon your request, counsel, to, to put forward, if that's what you want to do.
Okay, so here we are. So do you want to, can you read, can you read the motion again, Kathy? The way that you wrote it, the way that you've written it?
That the rules of procedure, number one, inaugural meeting and election of the warden be amended. That the rules of procedure be amended to delete section 39, proxy voting. That the date of the Middlesex County inaugural be scheduled for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, following the regular meeting, if only one candidate announces their intention at the end of today's meeting. That the attached bylaw be presented to county council for approval, and that the warden and the county clerk are authorized to execute the bylaw. And that the warden and the county clerk are authorized to execute the bylaw.
Okay, so, okay, so in the event that, the way it's written, if only one candidate announces their intention at the end of today's meeting. So if three people announce their intention, then it would still happen on December the fifth.
Correct.
Gotcha, or whatever, whatever that, that date is, okay.
Correct.
Okay, all right, I'm clear on that, I, look, I'm hoping everybody else is now. So I would ask, unless there's any more discussion on that, I would ask for a mover and seconder for that motion. Councillor DeVeet and the seconder, Councillor Mayhew. Any further discussion? All opposed. And that's carried. Okay, we do have a provincial three hundred million dollar business support fund. This is a resolution that Councillor Elliott is bringing forward and would like to speak to.
Yes, through you, Warden, so this motion was actually brought to the City of London Corporate Services Committee by Councillor Josh Morgan. And it's going to the City of London Council tonight. So essentially, on October ninth, it was earlier this month when the motion was written, but October ninth, Premier Ford had announced a thirty, a three hundred million dollar fund to support businesses that had moved into the modified stage two by the province. And this fund was essentially to help businesses with their fixed costs, so their mortgage, their rents and their utilities. And as the motion states, the premier indicated that, and he was quoted as saying, we will spare no expense to help business, business owners get through this. On October twenty-first, Dr. Mackey here in Middlesex London issued a section twenty-two orders that obviously impacted businesses here in the county of Middlesex. And unfortunately, since we are not in a stage two modified stage by the province, and just with these section twenty-two orders, our businesses do not qualify for any of that three hundred million dollar funding. And so I brought this motion forward, and again, in collaboration with Councillor Morgan at the City of London, to help the businesses in Middlesex in London, that we would, that the motion asked that we would support the province assisting the businesses, as well as that the warden be requested to engage with the premier and the Minister of Finance to request that the businesses in the county of Middlesex impacted by this, the section twenty-two orders by the Middlesex London Health Unit would be provided access to that three hundred million dollar business support fund. So just that extra layer of support for our businesses here in the county.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Elliott, any questions on what's been presented? Councillor Vanderheiden.
Thank you, and thank you, Councillor Elliott, for bringing this forward, it's, it's interesting when I read it. And I went back to what the premier said and read his, the article that came out as well. And you know, it's the, the four municipalities that he had listed there that are in that stage right now. Is there any indication that if one of them slides back to regular time, that some of that funding will be cut off? So that the rest of us can, if we flip into that, 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 that money will float elsewhere? Or is it just for those four, and what we're doing now is trying to put our, put our foot in the door, so that if that door opens at all, that we could get some funding for our municipalities? I'm not sure how that, that runs, because we, as you clearly said, we're, we're not in a section, the section twenty-two doesn't, doesn't count for what, what they're talking here.
Yes, through you, Warden, so essentially, any, any region that is sent back to a section, a stage two modified would be able to access this. So if any of those four regions move to a stage three, they would no longer receive the funding. So it's just when your region is in a section two, a modified stage two. And unfortunately, although we share a lot of the restrictions as the modified stage two, we aren't categorized as that. We just have the section twenty-two orders, which precludes us from being able to get into that fund for our businesses.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Councillor Elliott on this? Okay, I look for a mover and seconder for support, Councillor Elliott and Councillor Warwick. All opposed. And that's carried. Councillor Comments and Other Business. Councillor Ropp.
Thank you, Warden, I just wanted to bring forward that a developer that many of our municipalities have worked with or are working with, Jules Patton passed away on Friday morning. And I just wanted to send our condolences to the Patton family. This, and it was quite tragic, quite sudden, but I just want to let the council know that.
Great, appreciate you passing that on, Councillor Ropp. I know many of us have, have had lots of stories about jewels over the years, so. Councillor Vanderheiden.
Just wonder if the Warden, if you want to take a minute to update our colleagues on where we are at with our caucus and just quick update.
Yes, well, it's all been very exciting since our last meeting. And we've certainly gotten a lot of attention to the formation of the caucus. And it's all been very extremely, extremely positive. And we've all shared stories amongst ourselves of being in the grocery store, being in a coffee shop and somebody stopping us to say, congratulations, this is great for rural women in Middlesex. And so we're very excited about what, what's to come. So a couple of things, yesterday, we had quite a meeting with the Women's Rural Resource Centre in Strathroy, and they gave us an overview of what it is that they do and how they support women across the county. For some of us, you know, as much as they support women across the county, just where they are geographically, not all of us were familiar with all the work that they do. So that was, it was great to get to know them, and we're looking forward to being able to work with them as time goes on. We do have an event scheduled on November twenty-third, and an invitation will be going out to, to your councils, it is for women across Middlesex. And we're going to be speaking and asking them about how the pandemic has affected them and where they're at. It's really kind of that introductory conversation that we're looking to have to see where the needs are, where the gaps are, and where people are requesting or, or needing help as they work their way through this. We do have a guest speaker lined up that will be speaking to the she-session, to how women have been affected, I think it's great, we got to meet her last week. Councillor Elliott and Councillor DeVeet know her, and I think she'll be a great resource for the women across the county. So that's where we're, we're at, and certainly we're looking forward to furthering how we can, really figuring out where, how we can support the women across the county. So good first steps, that's for sure. Any other comments from councillors? Okay, bylaws, Kathy.
Okay, our first bylaw is to designate prescribed rates of speed on county roads number one to eighty-one inclusive. A bylaw to authorize the warden and the clerk to sign an agreement between the Corporation, the County of Middlesex, the London Health Sciences Centre and Middlesex London Emergency Medical Services Authority, operating as MLPS. With respect to reducing land ambulance offload delays by dedicating nurses to receive ambulance patients at emergency departments at the Victoria and University Hospital. A bylaw to authorize the warden and the clerk to execute a boundary line highway and non-boundary line highway maintenance agreement between the Corporation of the County of Middlesex and the Corporation of the County of Perth with respect to road maintenance for the period November first, 2020 to October thirty-first, 2030. A bylaw to authorize the warden and the clerk to execute a boundary line highway maintenance agreement between the Corporation of the County of Middlesex and the municipality of South Huron with respect to road maintenance for the period November second, 2020 to May first, 2030. A bylaw to amend the rules of procedure by law five nine six eight to allow for the declaration of the head of council and to repeal the proxy voting provisions. And a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the council, the Corporation of the County of Middlesex for November the tenth, 2020.
Okay, thank you, Kathy, a mover and seconder for the first and second reading. Councillor Brennan and Councillor Richards. All opposed. That's carried, and for the third and final reading, mover and seconder please. Councillor Vanderheiden and Councillor Elliott. All opposed. And that's carried. Moving into the committee of the whole. We do have some reports from our county officers, and the first one is from Cara, and it is an Economic Development Department update. Cara.
Wonderful, thank you, Warden, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to council and provide an update on some of the activities. We have certainly had a busy time in the active and tourism department over the course of the last eight months. And wanted to just bring you up to speed. Chris, are you in control of the presentation to pull it up?
I don't have it, but I'll grab it, give me one sec.
Wonderful, thank you, Chris. Looks like we're calling it up now.
Just give me one second, sorry.
Yeah, no worries, Chris, thank you very much.
I think I can get it barely if you're having trouble.
Just trying to bring it up here, sorry, got an email with it now, so. There we go, all right, I'm gonna share here, and we should be good.
Great. Thanks, Chris. All right, Chris, I don't think I have controls, so.
All right, you guys seeing that now?
We are.
Okay.
And it looks like it's maybe PDF form.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, if you just want to go to the next page, I, I don't think I can control it from this end, can I?
Yeah, if you want to just tell me when to go to the next one, I'll, I can control.
Okay, great, you can go to the first one then, thank you.
Whoa, hold on.
Technical difficulty.
All right, this page or next?
The next one, please.
Next one again?
I'm only seeing the first page, Chris. Sorry about that, folks.
No worries. When you think of all the Zoom meetings that council meetings we've had.
And I don't have sharing ability, so I can't.
There, how's that?
This, this might work.
Okay, perfect, so can we scroll down to the next page, please? Wonderful, thank you. So just to update in terms of leadership, many of you know about the things that we are involved in, but I have continued to chair the London Chamber of Commerce, the Agribusiness Committee through this time. Also co-chairing alongside Cindy, the Middlesex Workforce Development Partnership, alongside the warden herself, the Middlesex Economic Resiliency Task Force. And then we've moved that into the Middlesex Economic Development Strategic Planning Committee. And also newly coming up has been the appointment to co-chair the Ontario Food Cluster. We also, of course, remain a member of groups such as SWATI, which is our regional tourism corporation, SCORE, which you all know about, the Middlesex London Food Policy Council, the Middlesex County Safety and Wellbeing Committee with Cindy's leadership, TIO, which has become a very avid partner for us, so they are the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario. And then alongside a number of workforce projects together with our Workforce Development Group. That, of course, is on top of EDCO and EDAC, and you saw a picture there of the last official event the warden and I were able to attend just prior to the pandemic. We were able to have dinner with Premier Ford and Minister Fideli to talk about economic development priorities in, in our region.
The former mayor of North Bay, I would add.
Yes, that's right, some good things come out of North Bay. Um, the next thing I'll talk about is just reemphasizing this Board of Council for the development of community improvement plans has been taken up quite rapidly by our lower-tier municipalities. And this is just an idea of some of the things that are currently underway. Strathroy-Caradoc has expanded both geographically as well as incentive offerings through their CIP this year. Again, in partnership with the county to develop those plans. Middlesex Centre has now drafted their expanded plan, so that'll be going to their council soon. Again, that's both geographically as well as incentive offerings, because previously, similar to Strathroy-Caradoc, it was only for their downtown core of Elderton and was simply for facade improvements. Southwest Middlesex is currently in the development of their CIP. And North Middlesex as well is in the development of their new CIP alongside with Luca Madoff, and we just had one of their final consultation meetings just late last week. So lots of great work going on in this regard, lots of similarities and differences among the municipalities. But certainly a trend that we're seeing, not just in Middlesex County, but in across many communities, particularly those addressing pandemic needs. Next slide, please. It has, as I say, been a very busy year in our department. And we've had a number of partnerships, which we're very grateful for with respect to grants secured during this year. In lots of ways, that, that couldn't have come at a better time. So with respect to OMAFRA rent, we have had funding during the current year to double all of the workforce development initiatives for 2020. We're gonna get into some of those details, and some of those have been somewhat complicated, given the pandemic here. But a lot of progress made, and thanks to the province for that. We've also had an ongoing partnership with Global Affairs Canada. That funding is to complete our foreign direct investment strategy, which will be part of the Economic Development Strategy Refresh, which we're currently completing now. We've also been really lucky on the interest in one of our projects this year was the development of our Middlesex County Culinary Guide, the first time that we've done a project like that, which came at a very good time, given the need for promotion of food services in our area. FedDev Ontario, Middlesex London Health Unit, Middlesex London Food Feddev Ontario, Middlesex London Health Unit, Middlesex London Food Policy Council. And the Middlesex Federation of Agriculture all came on side for that. We also were the recipient this year of $138,000 grant from Fred Dev Ontario. In partnership with Taiyo for tourism relief and recovery funding, and I'll talk about some of those details as we move forward. Thanks, Chris, or Bill, I'm not sure who's controlling things, Bill, thank you. In terms of local projects, this is just a smattering, we've certainly been doing a lot of work. Whether it be on the CIP front or in other areas on local projects teaming up with our lower tier municipalities. I will say, it has been a particularly busy year for site selection inquiries. And so we are working on a number of new active files with several of our lower tier municipalities. And in fact, we've had two major investment opportunities come to the forefront just in the last 24 hours. So there doesn't seem to be a slowdown in that regard. Just some other examples, Southwest Middlesex, we're working on advancement of their economic development strategic plan that they created last year. They've hired an economic development and communications officer, we've been very involved in that, their CIP. We're also doing industrial park marketing for them. We just finished an aerial video for them last week, and I should say since this project or since this report was written. We've done a similar project with Tem Center as well, and we just filmed there on the weekend. Middlesex Centre, aside from the CIP, we've also been working on a BRNE strategy for industrial development. And we've got an application that we've supported to can export for them. We're also working with the University of Western Ontario on another project with regards to that. And that will include an industrial land analysis along the corridor. We can go to the next slide, please. Lots of interest and lots of support, which we appreciate greatly with the rapid. Putting into effect of our Middlesex Economic Resiliency Task Force. So this task force was charged under the co-chairing of the Warden and myself. To put in effect resources to assist in the pandemic. So you've seen many of the minutes from these meetings, we put that in effect for six months. That six months has exhausted at this point, but we've moved that into our other committee. For the Economic Development Strategic Plan Review. And this committee, of course, can be reinstated at any point. Through this, we established an action plan of the committee's goals and tactics. We continued communication regarding new supports and resources via social media. But we also created our own COVID-19 website and kept that information up to speed. We introduced some campaigns such as Middlesex Strong and carried out some new initiatives. To support our business communities. We coordinated production of a video message with the support of all of our mayors on council, and I thank you for that. It was very well received by the public. We conducted two business impact surveys, all of which information is being feeded into the economic development strategic plan. We participated in regular regional initiatives and calls, online network opportunities as well. And we provided safety recovery kits to employees of local businesses. The Middlesex Workforce Development Partnership, I mentioned to you that with the support of OMAFRA this year. We've been able to double the efforts that we generally would be able to carry out under this regard. So that partnership has stayed very much intact, it's a very active group that meets once a month. Within that, we've maintained, updated and promoted the work in Middlesex website job board. We've attended and promoted job fairs, both virtually and in person, London and Area Works. Ontario Feed Your Future Career Fairs, etc. We were able, despite the pandemic, to carry out a very successful Young Entrepreneurs Business Plan competition. Right before the summer, we had two recipients, one in the eight to 12 year old category and the other in 13 plus. And that's picture of one of our recipients there with some of the birdhouses that he was building. We have a workforce commercial that we've produced and featured on CTV as well as on social media. We created Middlesex Workforce Face Masks to be produced for local employees and employers. And those are produced locally, and there'll be 500 of those going out. We also have a really cool new project, we're actually launching this week into production. And that is going to be a reverse job fair, it's a profile of six businesses within Middlesex County. It will be the owner of the business together with an employee, talking about the nature of the work, what kind of jobs are available. And how students in high school can create a pathway to those types of employment. So a very exciting one with both school boards engaged, and that starts this week. We also did a Small Business Week contest in combination with the CFDC. And we've been doing a number of marketing campaigns with our project from last year, which is the Middlesex, the place we call home. That was our newcomers project. Next slide there, if we could, we have a number of new partnership programs proposed that may be coming to council's attention soon. Joint project with the Ontario Food Cluster and ourselves, again, for foreign direct investment. That strategy implementation, so that will be taking the strategy developed this year and putting it into play. So we're awaiting word on that project. We also have a brand new project that we have proposed to OMAFRA called From Our Hands To Your Table. It's a marketing campaign in partnership with the Food Policy Council. The Middlesex and London Federations of Agriculture, Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership, as well as Tourism Sarnia Lampton. And basically, it's a marketing campaign to talk about the connection between our local food producers. And food service providers, so we're excited about that possibility. We also have a very large scale tourism recovery fund that we're proposing. For your information, the regions of London Middlesex, Sarnia Lampton. And Windsor Essex Pele Island have been identified as some of the priority tourism investments by the province. And so we are now in discussions with our regional tourism group, which is Swatzy. And again, with the federal group, Feddev Ontario, to see about some particular investments. So that will be one to watch as well, and I'll keep council posted as we hear. As I said, we've moved our task force into the role of the Committee for Economic Development Strategic Plan. As you know, that was part of our discussions for this year, so we were able to secure quotations. Those were vetted by the committee a couple of months back, MTV Insight has been engaged to do that work. They were the company engaged to do the last strategy, so there will be some continuity in that. We have held stakeholder roundtables, advanced interviews. We did a business impact survey in addition to the previous two, we did one as part of this. We received 112 respondents to that. There will be tourism strategies and FDI strategies included in this plan. And these support the priorities identified in the Middlesex County. Official strategic plan that was just those priorities just adopted by council at last meeting. And this final strategic plan refresh will be presented to council next month. In terms of our egg strategy, again, this is one of those complicated situations this year. So in addition to working with regional groups on egg career attraction and recruitment, those sorts of things. We were lucky enough to carry out a major event in partnership with the London Chamber of Commerce. Called Changing Faces of Agriculture, which featured many of our middlesex entrepreneurs and innovators. In agriculture was very successful, we had over 300 people attend that event. And it took place again just prior to the pandemic. As part of the work that we've been doing over the course of the last few years with Fields to Forks. We actually extended into a new campaign this year with part of the radio program, which is called. On the Farm With Foreman, if you haven't caught that, it's been a very entertaining and thought provoking program. That Bell Media has put into play, and we've been very, very happy with the promotion received. And received a lot of comment from public, as well as our stakeholders in the agricultural sector about the success of that. The newest thing you will see is over the course of the next couple of weeks, you will see a Thank You Farmer campaign also coming out. As part of this, so if you watch for that. Despite pandemic restrictions, the popularity of our business profile series has continued. And we were very pleased to be able to work with eight businesses from the county again this year. And those are listed there, so we were able to highlight someone in each of the areas. Happy to say that those are just in their final edits this week. And we will be sending an invitation to council very soon for a virtual unveiling of all eight of those videos. But again, a great response from the business community, thank you to the lower tier municipalities. Who assisted in working through who we were going to feature and that sort of thing this year. But I think you'll be very pleased, not only the diversity of geography again. But the diversity of the businesses and the individuals that are running those businesses throughout our county, it's incredible. We've also continued communication just on the regular front with our newsletter, so we've been doing that on a quarterly basis. And so you'll see that coming across your emails and out to the business community as well. I can have the next slide, please. As I noted, we did receive $138,000 as a tourism regional relief partnership. And we were on track to have all of those funds expended by December. However, Feddev Ontario and Taiyo have extended that into February this year. So with some of the new restrictions, we're able to continue some of our efforts into February now. But this is just an idea of some of the projects that we've been involved with, and I need to thank these groups. Because they have provided at least 50% funding of each one of the ones that's noted here. So example, in Middlesex Centres, we partnered with the Kamoka Community Market to extend their hours to Thanksgiving this year. Which they would generally not be able to have accomplished. In Strathroy Karadok, we've had a couple of different partnerships, but one of them was these pop-up patios, which are. You've seen throughout the community and ended up being quite popular and very attractive. So we have to thank everyone involved, because it's not easy to make those happen. In Lukin Bedolf, we have an outdoor patio heater rental and shop local campaign going on. With the I Love Thorndale Group, we have a partnering, we've enhanced the welcome package campaign. The BIA and Strathroy also just partnered with us last week, on Thursday, we did storefront makeovers. From two businesses and were able to go in. And the video will be coming out very soon, which will showcase all of the work that they did. And it will have helpful tips for other businesses on how they can do the same thing on a shoestring budget. We also work together and are thanks to the planning and GIS department for their help in this regard. In order to again assist people with the opportunity to dine local when restrictions were heavily enforced. Was to create a dine local map, and so this pinpointed all places along with the availability of food. Whether it be dine-in service, takeout service, etc. And online availability and ordering for these businesses throughout this time, so that's pretty popular as well. We've had a number of social media contests, I know many of you on council have shared these, and they've been very popular. So again, with the help of the TRRF funds through Feddev, we've been able to assist our businesses in creating contests. To keep the excitement, so some of the things you've seen is our visit list, our fall in love, our dine-in Middlesex and our gift of local. So those campaigns will be running until Christmas time. And again, we couldn't do that with the help and support of all of the private businesses in terms of putting it all together. Or without the help of our federal counterparts in helping to fund this. We also have been able to produce a new visit Middlesex tourism commercial, it's very, very well done. It's just in its final throes of production, and we'll soon be able to release that as well. We may even be able to release that as part of our viewing party with the profile videos this year, so watch for that. I mentioned earlier, the hashtag Middlesex Strong has been something that has very much been taken up by many of our businesses. And by yourselves on council, we appreciate that definitely shows support. As you know, we produced a number of Middlesex Strong face masks, so many that we needed to do another order of these. And then we put these together in our Middlesex Strong Business Safety Kits. We've already had 60 of these go out to different businesses through the community, but they remain available. So they include sanitizer, Middlesex Strong decal for the windows. We've seen a lot of those coming across on, on the social media. And just the masks and other things that will help in terms of the PPA requirements that are so heavily needed by our businesses right now. I'm gonna go to the next one, please. Advertising wise, again, the TRF fund combined with our regular tourism budget has allowed us to. Put our information a little further, so you will see us in campaign showcased in villager publications. Across the county, media city billboards in some arenas, as well as in the public context, Cineplex and OnRoute. Stations, Day Tripping Magazine, Horizon Media, Post Media Solutions. And in fact, the National Post took up some of our articles as well. We have partnered with the Culinary Tourism Alliance as well, and we created a passport program. And there's an example of all of the different businesses of different kinds that we've been able to put together into this passport program. And so all of the businesses also go through a period for safe travel stamping and that sort of thing. To ensure that they are, can be open to the public for the things that we are promoting on their behalf. We've also had an exciting little partnership with a group called Young and Free Press. And they have, they have a group of young people that go out and do social media takeovers for different groups. And talk about fun things to do in different counties, and this group hired in partnership with us. A local team to join their group and to just comment on some of the exciting things that they found in our county to explore. Photography, it's also been a great opportunity this year to get out and take some photography. And we've had the opportunity to do that in partnership with Swatzy. Who lent us a photographer to do a couple of different rounds. We've also been able to partner with some local photographers, just being able to see some beautiful works that they've been putting together. Because of their opportunity to get out and see things a little bit differently during the pandemic, so lots of photography. So if any lower tier municipalities, councillors, anyone is looking for beautiful photography of our county. We certainly have a gallery that is worth noting. So that brings me to the end of just providing you with a smattering of updates. But I would like to officially thank the Warden, our staff. And all of members of council for your support over the course of this year. And it certainly has been a different one for all of us and for our business community. And I know how much they appreciate your support, and I'm looking forward to presenting to the Economic Development Strategy Refresh next month.
Hey, well, thank you so much for that report, Cara. You know, it can't be said enough times about how different the year has been. And you know, how you've, your department has had to kind of pivot a little bit. As to how we are, how you are supporting local business, but how you are still moving economic development. In the region ahead, so you know, congratulations to you and your team for the work that you have done. Certainly, I think that I have heard more from local business. About the support that they get from the county than I have had in the past. And I don't know whether it's because of the role I'm in this year, or because of the work that you're doing, or a combination. But certainly, I've seen. But certainly, I've seen more of a presence of of the um, department out there. And I think you and your team have done a great job of highlighting our businesses and supporting them where where you can. So congratulations for that. Any questions or comments on that presentation? Counselor Vanderheiden?
Thank you through the Warden. Now, thank you for that presentation. And I know economic development over the years, we've always had different conversations about what works, what doesn't work. And through COVID right now, it's it's really complicated on on what what we can move forward on. And I think that you've done a great job in 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 highlighting and being creative and how we can still continue to highlight. You know, the dining piece, the this piece, the that piece, the fields to forks uh, on the TV that 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 is in the news like every day. I can tell you that even you know, that the the videos or the advertising that happen on on our local TV stations and radio stations. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was doing my walkabout downtown and I met two groups of women that were here from out of town. Because they saw that on TV and they wanted to see it for real. So they wanted to go for a drive, which is right now something that people still can do. But they need a place to to drive to and that's what they did. And they were just walking around. They bought something in a number of different stores. So. You know, it it sometimes it seems like it's we're we're spinning our wheels, but I don't think we are. And I think in of any time that we still have to highlight what we have to offer in Middlesex County, now is that time. We don't want that to fall off the plate. I think it'll be interesting to see how the foreign direct investment piece will will uh, pan out, especially in the food industry. Because we are a very rural area and and the agriculture is very strong. So look forward to that. So thank you. It's just more a statement than and a comment than than it is um, a question. But I think we need to keep moving forward and even sometimes it feels like we're spinning our wheels. We don't know where we're getting. Traction and where people are actually noticing, but it is being noticed and and the Warden did mention that as well. And I think that's important for us to keep going with.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Vanderheiden. Counselor Warwick?
Yes, thank you through the Warden. And Kara, again, that was a great presentation and and lots of exciting things happening. I do agree with uh, Counselor Vanderheiden that the videos are an excellent way to promote ourselves and and easily seen and easily shared. I I just wondered, um, the paper piece with the culinary guide. Is that something that we're gonna go ahead in the future with or how do you feel? What's your thoughts on on paper as part of economic development?
It's a, it's always an interesting one through you, Warden, uh, to Counselor Warwick. You know, there was a time about two years ago where people really thought that paper was going by the wayside. And they weren't investing in it anymore. And we had a number of different groups coming forward. The pandemic certainly throws a new spin on paper. However, I will tell you that we actually completely gave away all distribution of the first run of our culinary guide. Within about two months. Um, and that's through partnering with some of our local groups, the markets, et cetera. So there still is a demand for that paper. We have put in for another run of it, but it's something for us to watch. And we're going to have to see with our libraries getting back into play. How many of those publications are going to be printed? That being said, our group has invested and produced all of our guides online. Not just in PDF form, but we actually have them in an interactive flipbook. Which has also proved extremely popular for people. So when we do our social media. We do of course mention that we can provide a PDF guide, but the most popular version right now would be those online.
And and I did uh, look at the flipbook version of it and I thought that was great and a good way to do. And maybe it's just a selfish thing because I'm kind of one of those ones that grabs the paper and then ends up with it on the floor of the car two months later, wondering why it's there. So you know, that's uh, always what happens with me. So, but uh, again, thank you for your work, Kara. That's great.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Devi?
I'll keep it short and um, just add on through you to Kara. Thank you for the presentation. Very comprehensive as usual. And it's always great to hear more detail on some of the projects that you've worked on and how they've worked out and. What's going really well and and how things are evolving. I wanted just to to add to the comments about the reach of what you're doing is significant. I think because you bump into people at different um, venues or or the farmer's market, for example. And when you're just going by, even with masks and stuff, you tend to engage at some level. And you you hear that people are from different places, this idea that you can get in a car and drive somewhere with someone in your bubble. And then walk around outside or or whatever. It it's, I I think this is absolutely the kind of thing that people are doing right now. And to have choices of where to go and the things to do um, is is really something that people can relate to. And and the other part, I what I hear is the diversity in the kinds of businesses. That um, even local people have suddenly noticed and have taken a a note of. And um, I think that, I don't think that'll go away, this idea that we have businesses in our communities that are um, doing really neat things. This is, this is a good trend and and I think the work you're doing is really supported awareness and and. The circumstances have made people maybe more aware, but I think it's a virtuous cycle. So I think it, this is absolutely the right track to be on. So thanks again for the presentation, the work you'd be doing.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Kara at this time? Okay, thanks so much Kara. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Warden.
Middlesex Strong. Okay, winter COVID nineteen preparedness for winter maintenance activities. Chris?
Thanks, Madam Warden. And Bill or Chris Bailey, whoever is sharing the presentation, if you want to flip that one up, please.
Ready for you this time.
Look at that, yeah, quick drop. So just wanted to give council uh, an update on what we're doing to prepare for. The potential effects of COVID on our winter maintenance activities. So one thing it's important to remember is sort of where where we're guided with regards to what level of service we provide uh, in terms of winter maintenance. And under the municipal act and the minimum maintenance standards, just an idea of where we look to prescribe. How many hours can go by before we have to react to a winter event? What are prescribed uh, minimums are for, you know, amount of smoke, snow accumulation, ice roadways. And where we go if we can't meet those standards, right? So we have a defined bylaw in the county that talks about our desirable standard. We have the minimum maintenance standards, then we have a fallback under section forty-four of the municipal act, just includes this for you to remember. If you're not meeting minimum maintenance standards regulations, you do have this provision to show that you're doing everything you can. What reasonable steps you're taking to provide safe roads during the winter season. If and when we may be affected by COVID and its effect on our staff. Keep scrolling down there, Bill. So what could happen? We look at what happens internally without with our own staff. What possibly could happen with our equipment? Fortunately, we're in good shape with our equipments. Compliment for our fleet, we're waiting on one more truck to be delivered in time for this winter season. And then supplies, what happens if we have an extremely heavy snow winter, ice winter and we can't get salt or sand or other supplies? Because the distributor of those materials is having difficulty. So we're being prepared for those types of things. And then what happens externally? What happens when? One of the local municipalities uh, has some trouble delivering winter maintenance service. How can we help? What happens with our neighbors? We do power roads uh, or are some of our neighboring counties and the city of London and vice versa. Uh, and then what happens with the province? You know, we have Chad challenges in the past with the four hundred series highways being closed down. We're trying to communicate with them as they use locally area maintenance contractors uh, to do their winter maintenance activities on the highways. Being making sure that we're prepared if and when they have to close those highways now. Excellent. So what happens if these are the things that we're thinking about here and we're preparing for? What happens if we have to quarantine some or all of our staff? What happens if one of the neighboring municipalities is affected and has to quarantine as well? What happens if Neil and his team or our police services or our local fire departments can't get to a scene because of snow or ice? And what happens if we see the provincial highways uh, shut down and uh, traffic being diverted onto county roads? So these are all things that we're thinking about, making sure we're prepared for. Uh, next slide. So what are we doing for our staff? Again, and this is uh, something we've been preaching since the start of COVID. Because as you all know, uh, construction hasn't slowed down. Uh, and we've been in full road construction and and maintenance mode all summer. So uh, starting in the spring, when we first uh, got exposed to COVID as a community. We isolated our uh, teams into small groups. So typically in the summertime, we would mix our groups together. We'd have a few men from every district get together and work on, say, a bridge crew or a specific construction project. What we did was we changed that practice and just had the districts work in those teams and stay within those teams all summer. So we don't have staff moving between geographic districts or actually just not mixing and move around the whole county. But they don't mix with staff from other districts. Which helps us avoid cross pollination potentially of the COVID inspection amongst our COVID infection amongst our staff. Unfortunately, we have not had uh, COVID positive staff member uh, in the county, in the roads department so far this year. We are giving clear direction and training and providing the policies to our staff and reminding them what they need to do. We want to make sure that they have access to the proper equipment, the PPE, those types of things. And we are able to, we're able to secure those supplies and are continuing to distribute those supplies to our staff. Actually have some enhanced cleaning tools we're going to be using throughout the winter. We we have a fogger. Which is a device that basically sprays the interior of the cabin and uh, ensures that we can eliminate any sort of lingering. Viruses between our shifts. And then working cooperatively with the union is a big one. Uh, talking to our union members, making sure that they understand there's going to be times where we're challenged. To follow the standard protocols of, say, seniority. Some of the other challenges we might have with dealing with bringing people in simply because we have to keep people isolated in very small groups. Talk a little bit more about that in the next slide, Bill. So one of the things we're doing and making sure that our employees. Feel safe and they feel that they can call in sick. We want to make sure that they know we would prefer them to stay home if they're feeling symptomatic than to come to work. And potentially spread that around and negatively impact their coworkers. So we're making very sure that our staff understand that if they are not well, if they are experiencing symptoms, COVID symptoms. We would ask they stay home and seek out testing. Fortunately, uh, thanks again to Neil and his team. We are working with them to provide and and expedited testing uh, potential for our staff. Because it's critical for us to make sure that our staff uh, are COVID free and can return to work. For a little later in the presentation, what kind of an effect that might have on our winter maintenance activities, but it is serious. So we want to make sure that we have the ability to get our staff tested quickly. Get them shown that they're for COVID free and back operating that winter maintenance equipment. Our foreman and crew leaders are going to spend most of the winter communicating uh, outside of the facility. Basically sitting in the truck and speaking to the staff, certainly not going to have them mix. They are the few employees that may mix between. Different groups of our staff. So we have some protocols involved for them to make sure that they're not having direct contact with those employees. We're doing our best to limit the mixing of employees across shifts. The way we provide winter maintenance services in the county is we have two shifts all winter. Those shifts are actually going to start on Monday of next week. And those shifts change over at two PM in the afternoon. So we've created a buffer around that two PM hour. To make sure that we have time for the previous shift to come in thoroughly give a cleaning to the equipment. And then leave the site before the second shift arrives. We have told our staff that if they are arriving on site early, they're remaining in their vehicles. Until such time as the entirety of the previous shift has left the garage. So we're creating a buffer uh, essentially to make sure that we don't cross pollinate between those um, staff between those shifts. We've also actually created a uh, some redundancies in the system. We have a few additional casual employees that we would hire some casual players every winter. We've hired. Extra casual employees in each district just to cover back in case we see some people calling in sick and not able to attend work. We're not going to be short-staffed to cover off our winter maintenance routing. We're also making sure that all of our foreman and supervisors are up to date on their licensing. Uh, all these gentlemen, all previously were. Came up through the ranks of the county. We're fortunate to have that happen. So they all know how to drive a snow plow. So we actually have a floating color supervisory shift that can backfill. To make sure a district, if our entire district is shut down due to COVID between both shifts. We do have the ability to backfill that district with supervisory staff. Hoping we don't get there. And we're hoping a lot of these provisions we're putting in place will prevent that from happening. But we have plans upon plans upon plans here to make sure that our traveling public are protected this winter. And next slide please. So again, I talked a little bit about uh, backfilling with supervisory staff here, but we're prioritizing our winter response. And you'll see that over the next couple of slides, just to to show you what we're doing with regards to prioritizing our routes. Those of you who don't know, if we if we have a class one or a class two road in this county. Our uh, response time is three or four hours on some of those roads. We have to be out there for aware of an icy road. We, you know, or snow accumulation. We really have three or four hours to get out there and respond. So we really should be hitting those. High volume, high speed roads twice a shift at a minimum. Uh, so we're making sure that we're able to do that. Talked a little about the redundancy and the employee complement. We're making sure we have a clear definition of what a response is. So response criteria, making sure they know. That certain roads have to be uh, attended to in a certain period of time, reminding that. One thing I'm talking, of course, we do meet very regularly with our local counterparts in the public works offices. One of the things we can do, but hope never to have to do is to actually close roads and and sidewalks in our local municipalities. If we simply cannot attend those uh, parts of our infrastructure due to being restricted with the amount of staff we have available due to a COVID infection. So talking about that and making, talking about communication, I'm going to talk a little bit more in this presentation about how we're going to do that. And then plans upon plans upon plan. So the next two slides, Bill, if you want to slide down, I might fly back, back and forth. So the first slide is our winter flower routes. So you can see on this slide, it might be a little difficult to see due to the size. But all those colored lines are routes that are traveled by our, each of our winter trucks. So a winter truck would, for the whole winter would follow uh, a red line in their district or an orange line. So you can see some routes are longer than others. And some luck routes are a little shorter, but again, it's all dependent on how quickly we need to get to those locations or responding. In accordance with minimum maintenance standards. And again, making sure we have enough material on a truck that they can make a whole route. So all these have been measured out, all these have been tested. These are not uh, polluted thin air. The lot of these routes we've had for many years and when they get adjusted year to year to make sure we can get through those roads, do those routes in a certain amount of time. And usually we can get three, potentially four runs on these routes during a single shift. Every two hours we plan to get through these runs if we definitely have to. With some wiggle room on either end, um, but two or three hours would be typical. And then of course, you know, time for our staff to take breaks between those shifts, load trucks and do, you know, refuel and those type of things. So if you go to the next slide, Bill. This is what might happen if we're get down to a skeleton crew. So this is goes back, excuse me, to. Uh, class one and class two roads. You can see some of the challenges we have there and some of the communities that would be pretty negatively affected by. Us having to reduce service to this bare bones minimum level. Uh, I would note Lucan is not completely isolated. Uh, the the main road through Lucan is maintained by the province of Ontario. But again, some of these other routes uh, in our rural areas could be challenged. This isn't to say these would wouldn't get plowed, you know, immediately or ever, I should say. But they may see one truck a shift. And it may come to this just to make sure we're maintaining this core network of roads. And trying to protect ourselves with regards to responding according to provincial standards. Next slide please. So how do we prepare the public, right? So our road users are are used to, and we pride ourselves on providing a very high level of winter maintenance on our road network. I uh, have always prescribed to the fact that keeping our roads in good working condition in the winter time. If it prevents one serious injury or fatality on our roads, it it's worth the investment that we have in our fleet and in our staff. To make sure we're keeping those roads clear of snow and ice as best that we can. And people expect to see our roads clear of snow and ice twenty-four hours a day, uh, anytime during the winter season. But the service levels, not only in the Middlesex County, but across our region uh, may vary significantly. And we don't know what challenges may happen in, say, a Lampton County or Huron County. People traveling from Sarnia to London or from London further to the east towards Toronto or Hamilton. You know, they may may experience very different levels of service than they're used to when traveling from point A to point B. We really need to help hammer into the uh, drivers that they need to be better prepared this year than ever before. Um they need to have a, a, a winter car emergency kit. Uh they may should be prepared with a 72 hour emergency kit in their homes, just in case they get trapped due to a severe winter storm. They need to better prepare before they leave the house and get on the road to make sure road conditions are such that they can get to where they're planning to go. To their destination safely. So all these types of things. Really need to be communicated. And you go to the next slide, Bill, but it, it's really just to talk about what sort of resources are out there. So there's lots of things online. Um just referencing sort of our local radio station, I know people. And not to listen to the radio as much as anymore than their media players, but it's really important to tune into your local radio, whether it's in Strathroy or City of London, get those weather reports. Uh 511 is a great website. That's the Ontario Travel and Information website. Uh gives you lots of information about road conditions on provincial highways and across the province. Be prepared. Uh government of Canada has lots of good websites. I've just shown a couple of screenshots there about your emergency preparedness for your car, emergency preparedness for your home. One thing we're going to try and do a lot better that we, we failed that in the past, be uh blatantly bluntly honest is using our Twitter. So we have our middle six county roads at roads middle sex Twitter. We're going to use that to help spread messages about being prepared for winter, spread messages when we're having challenges meeting our uh standards of service. And spread messages about challenges they may be seeing in neighboring municipalities. So we're going to do better. Uh than we have in the past about providing information through that uh social media. Next page please. So working with our partners and again, we've, we've been meeting with the public works officials uh all the time. So there may be times when our neighbors or local municipalities maybe challenge to meet even a very basic level of road maintenance. We don't want that to happen, but we can help each other out. So. You know, there's never really a problem and I, I don't hear an issue from any of our local municipal officials about providing service on each other's road networks if the need arises. And I've been working with Wayne and his team on a memorandum of understanding just to make sure that we don't create a system where. There's uh some type of question over liability if something does happen. And we do get a lot of protection. Uh from being under a declared emergency. Shared declared emergency due to COVID, the COVID pandemic. There is a lot of protection there from the province in case there is. Questions about us meeting our standards of levels of service for winter maintenance. But again, just want to make sure we're all on the same page, operating under the same type of rules. And we'll have that and you should be seeing that come around to your local councils or to through your local CEOs in the near future. Next slide please. Don't think Neil ever wants to uh be pulling one of his own ambulances out, but. Just a reminder, this can't happen and has happened in the past. And we have a longstanding policy about escorting emergency services vehicles to a scene. Or from a scene. So if there is ever any question about getting an ambulance to a home or getting clearing a path for a fire truck. We're there. We've uh we're providing up to date emergency contact numbers to emergency services to make sure that they know that we are available to help them out when necessary. And again, talked earlier about clear policies to our staff, just got to make sure that they know. That they don't put themselves at risk where they're the ones going to be in the back of that ambulance or trying to escort. We all try and do our best to make sure everybody can get there safe. Get them attended to and get them to the hospital. So we're going to do all those things. We've done it in the past and we continue to provide that service. We don't care whether it's just over the border in another municipality. Whether it's down a gravel road, we'll be there to help and escort if we're needed. And that, that's a service where we're, I think is very important. We continue to provide to our emergency response teams. And I think that's it. There's a next slide there. Just another reminder, anybody watching on YouTube, if you want to subscribe to the at roads middle sex Twitter. We'll be providing some messaging through that uh social media outlet uh before we see the snow. And during the winter season, in case we see any disruptions or changes to our level of service or around in our neighboring areas. So. With that in mind, we're, I'll leave it at that and be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that report, Chris. You know, after the weather that we've been experiencing the last few weeks, it's, or I guess the last few days, excuse me. Um it's hard to picture, you know, pulling your ambulance out yourself and uh hopefully uh we won't have to worry about those kinds of conditions. But it is southwest middle sex, middle sex county, and we all know how quickly the, the weather can change. So thanks for that update. Uh that was great. A lot of work went into that. Any questions or comments for Chris on that? Counselor Vanderheiden?
Just a really quick one. And I just want to thank you for the report. I think it just, it, it makes us remember what we all have to do in our own communities as well to be prepared. So thank you for that. Uh I was going to ask this earlier and I forgot. Um I don't know if Chris sometime during the, the meeting could update us on what we're doing in on 81 highway. Um uh boring underneath the tracks. It's fascinating. And I'm not sure that it, that you all know what we're doing here. It's, it's just one of those things that's very unique that I don't know that we've done here before. We may have, but I, not my time.
Yeah, through the warden, the council, you know, this is a joint project we've been working on with Strathroy, Caradoc, and we have had some experience boring under a uh railway. Uh some really successful, some not so much, but in this case, it's going very well. There's actually some significant amount of infrastructure going under the tracks. There's always been a challenge providing stormwater drainage. Uh so those of the uh the tracks in Strathroy and we built a new stormwater outlet. By the river just north of Front Street by the TSC. It's still TSC, maybe PV Mart right now. Um and uh we're uh boring a, a very large diameter pipe under the tracks. Very uh interesting engineering project. Going fairly smoothly up to this point. Great partnership with CN Rail. And the local contractors on that. So it was very interesting to see. How that's going forward. We hope to have that the first board done hopefully in the next week or so. And there's a second board that's going to happen. Shortly after that one, a little shallower, a little smaller, but uh still really interesting project. Going very well and hopefully have everything done well ahead of the winter season.
Yeah, the comments, uh questions for Chris on his report? Okay, thanks again, Chris. That was great. Um, okay, action items. Report from Dirk with regards to Lucan Bedolph official plan amendment. Dirk.
Uh thank you, Madam Warden. Um so this is uh official plan amendment number eight in Luca Bedolph. Um and it really, it's, it's a proposal to develop two, four story apartment buildings on a property. And um without getting into all the details of the, of the local planning report and, you know, a portion of the property is designated and was zoned for a, a portion of this use, but not the entire extent of the applicants plans. So the official plan amendment extends that designation and those permissions across the rest of the property. And it also, um and, and I noted a little bit later in the report uh with regards to the zoning, it has some particular. There, there is some complexity to figuring all this on this property and there are some special provisions because this is the main street of Lucan. To ensure that there is still continued uh commercial use on the main, on the main floor and then residential above it. And the property uh as it says, is on Main Street and it's next to the library and township office. I'm sure you've been there. The planning reports that were considered locally uh by Luca Bedolph Council are attached. And I guess overall in summary, um as you know, the PPS and the county's official plan due to direct urban style development to urban areas on full municipal services. Local Bedolph official plan does have a number of criteria to be considered and the township uh council was satisfied that those were met. So. I am satisfied that amendment number eight is consistent with the planning documents and recommended approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks for that, Dirk. And I'm sure many of my colleagues have been on that property in one of its previous uh. Uh businesses that it was more famous. Um any questions or comments on the official plan amendment? Amendmentation. Okay, so seeing none, you do have a motion in front of you. If I can get a mover and seconder for that, that would be great. Counselor Smith. And Counselor Richards. All opposed. And that's carried. Um another one from Dirk with regards to a proposed plan of condominium in Middlesex Centre.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So this is a, a proposal for 68 essentially townhouse uh units. On full municipal services and it's right along County Road 14 in the area of Kamook and Millikin. Or if that is, is under rapid development right now. It's a medium density block and it was created as part of the approval of the previous plan of subdivision. And now they're coming forward with the two uh further development by plan economy media. Um again, the planning reports that were considered uh locally are attached. This did take some time to get through the, the local process. It was initially an application in July of 2019. Uh but most recently in October, uh it was October 28th, Middlesex Centre Council did support this development proceeding forward now that the engineering and other matters have been addressed. Um attached are proposed conditions of draft plan approval. And they address matters that the county engineer had requested the conservation authority and also the municipality. So. I am uh again, have reviewed all this material. I am satisfied that it is consistent with PPS and it does conform with the county's official plan and then the more specific direction in the local official plan. And also would recommend approval of the condominium. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, Dirk. Any questions or comments on this report? Okay, seeing none, then I would look for a mover and seconder for the recommendation. Counselor Warwick. And Counselor Elliott. All opposed. And that's carried. Great. Moving on to correspondence and information items. General payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $321,699. Planning payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $13,516.33. Electronic payments for the month of October 2020 totaling $1,512,685. Social service payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $343,278.81. Strathmere Lodge payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $171,393.39. Road payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $291,665.29. MLPS payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $1,01363.43. ITS payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $170,729.53. Economic development payables to October 30th, 2020 totaling $63,684.74. Can I get a mover and a seconder to receive those items for information, please? Counselor Rock. And Counselor Javiette. All opposed. Those are carried. Okay, Strathmere Lodge Family Friend and Responsible Party Newsletter, November 2020. Letter from the Ministry of Finance announcing the 2021 Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund allocations. Middlesex County allocation is $432,400. Seventh report of the Middlesex County Library Board Meeting held on Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. Letter from LAS AMO Business Services advising that Middlesex County will receive $3,158.95 rebate. From our membership in the LAS natural gas program. AMO update entitled COVID-19 liability production or protection Municipal Elections Act and Ontario Digital Identity. Public Health Orders and Childcare dated October 21st, 2020. AMO update entitled new legislation expedites provincial infrastructure, reduces red tape and allows off-peak deliveries dated October 23rd, 2020. AMO update entitled COVID-19 resiliency stream launch and new funding to fight human trafficking dated October 28th, 2020. AMO update entitled 2021 OMPF allocations and LTC home. A community paramedicine program dated October 30th, 2020. AMO update entitled standards of care and long-term care homes dated November 2nd, 2020. Uh Counselor Rock.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Through the warden to, I'm not sure if this would be the bill or this would be too, but. They're announcing that four hours of direct care and they, there haven't been any plans showing how they're going to. Uh get that. Has there any background to that? Because if you look at it now, that's, that's quite a goal for them to come through. Maybe Brent can speak to that one. Because I'm not seeing how you're going to add that much direct care time.
Not sure who wants to take that. Brent, do you want to?
Probably Brent would know be the most for that if he could.
Through the warden to the counselor, um what we know is that uh I think it's a four-year plan in terms of funding to, to achieve that. There's also the issue, of course, of human resources and uh for example, finding the PSWs and the RNs and the RPNs to. To meet that standard. And I, I think the province uh over the next few years will concentrate on, on recruitment and uh. Even talk, for example, of um offering free tuition for PSWs and that type of thing. So the province uh. I think will be concentrating on a strategy, a human resource strategy to, to help us get there.
Just a follow-up if I may to that. Brent, what is the, what is the targeted amount of direct care time at this time?
Yes, through the warden, um the, at the lodge, we're probably sh- just shy of three hours per resident per day.
Okay, thank you. That is actually pretty good in comparison to, I think, the provincial average. So, thank you.
Thanks for that, Brent. Brian? Okay, moving on. Notice from the Ontario Energy Board advising that Enbridge Grass Gas has applied to raise its natural gas rates effective April 1st, 2021. To recover costs associated with the federal government's greenhouse gas pollution pricing act. Notice from the Ontario Energy Board advising that Enbridge Gas has applied to raise its natural gas rates effective January 2nd, 2021. Strathmere Lodge Ministry of Long-Term Care Inspector Visit. Uh Counselor Vanderheiden.
Thank you through the word and um I don't really have a question. It's just uh when I read this, I thought of how important it is and I, I spoke to some of our um. Um friends at Cowen Insurance uh not too long ago. And one of the things that they said to me, I asked them, I said, so throughout this COVID thing. What is it that you could recommend to us as an insurer that we should pay attention to? And they said, um documentation. So um I mean, we just listened to Chris with all his information that he gave us. This, this has to do with some documentation and we really need to be aware of crossing every T, dotting every I, bowling everything because one of these days. The first COVID-related insurance claims are going to come through and we need all that documentation totally in place and. And even through Chris's report, people working from home, people working from their trucks, people working in different places. We're not used to where we are. With the routine we used to have. And one of the things that can fall off the plate is the documentation because we're so busy doing things different ways. So I'm just throwing that out there for, for everyone to, to hear because I think it's so important. That we don't get caught without that documentation because that's, that's the thing that will back us up moving forward.
Thanks for that, Counselor Vanderheiden. Um, okay, Brent, did you have a comment to that or? Nope, you just turned your mic off.
Yes, if I may through you. Um yeah, the, the challenge, of course, is to um. To achieve the, the required documentation, but at the same time being at the bedside and, and providing that direct care. Um so it's a constant challenge and uh but a point well taken.
Yep. Thanks for that, Brent. Certainly is a balancing act, that's for sure. Yeah. Thanks for that, Brent. Certainly is a balancing act. That's for sure. AML update entitled COVID-19 Response Framework and AMO's Bill 218 submission dated November 3rd, 2020. AML update entitled additional funding for broadband dated November 4th, 2020. AML update entitled 2020 provincial budget dated November 5th, 2020. Okay, can I get a mover and a seconder to receive those items for information, please? Counselor Elliott and a seconder, Counselor Brennan. All opposed. And that's carried. Any inquiries? Okay, new business. You've got the list of our county meetings, our next county council meetings. And of course, we will be meeting on Tuesday, November the 24th. Announcements. Kathy, if you want to run this part?
Oh, wait. Sorry, Madam Warren, you were going to give me a chance to talk about the.
Yes, sorry. Sorry.
So there was a fire in Strathroy at one of the housing facilities. And Cindy, can you just give us an update? So council's right up to date to the minute on how we're dealing with that?
Sure. Thanks through the Warden. On Sunday night, there was a structured fire in Strathroy, Caradoc. As our CIO pointed out, in one of our apartment buildings. Victim Services of Middlesex and the Canadian Red Cross arranged temporary shelter and meals for 15 residents. Other residents were able to stay with family or friends. Middlesex County Social Services was contacted on Monday by the Strathroy Fire Department. Victim Services and the Canadian Red Cross, given the scope of the temporary assistance required. This emergency response team is now working together to support these residents. Social services can provide support such as hotel stays, transportation, emergency food and clothing. And of course, that's using our homeless prevention dollars and our recent social service relief fund, SSRF. The new community navigator position in the library is also able to provide assistance. With items such as obtaining new personal identification, such as birth certificates, if those were damaged during the fire. The emergency response team is meeting again today to discuss next steps. And I'll also point out in discussions with the city of London, they will reach out to the property owner as an affordable housing development. Happy to answer any questions and provide an update as I have more information.
Madam Warren, the reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is it's just so unique and I don't remember a time we've even come close to having to deal with a situation like this in my time here. And so I just wanted counsel to know that we're, we're leaning a little bit on the, on the go. But I think it's going really well so far and to let you know that we're doing our best to help everyone out.
Counselor Vanderhayden?
Thank you for that update, Cindy and Bill. It's, it's been a busy couple of days here and I've been in constant communication with our fire chief on, on what's happening and how, how. This is one of our newer buildings. It's only like three or four years old and it's, it's a real good testament to an affordable housing building where, where you've got. People that, that pay market rent, people that don't and it's nobody's marginalized because nobody knows who's, who's who. And it was started on the third floor and that went into the ceiling and I don't know if anybody watched the news yesterday. A gentleman woke up because his dog woke him up and that's how he saw the fire and that's who actually alerted. Ian or the fire, et cetera. So that was interesting how everybody got out of the building. I guess my question to Cindy would be, who, who, who should we send? Help messages to, I got a message not, not even half an hour ago from a church that wants to help and has reached out. Who would I send that number to and that, that, that message to in order to? Have them help as well. Is it to the library? Connection or is it to you or like, I know that the Red Cross is helping and social services, but who's the contact person that I would send all that information to?
Through the Warden to the counselor. You can send that to myself or Pauline Andrew in social services. And we'll make sure that we get all that information collated and making sure people get the support that they need.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that update, Cindy and Bill. And I know that as, as it develops, you will continue to keep us updated. Okay, moving on, I guess Kathy, I'll turn it over to you for this part of the meeting.
Thank you. As you know, we are not able to host our yearly recognition for long service employees. And invite past wardens in which everyone really enjoys. But so at this point, we are going to. I'm going to request anyone who wants to put their name forward to run for Warden to do so at this time.
So it has been quite a year and I have thoroughly enjoyed the position and with all the challenges. But there certainly has been a lot of, I've certainly found a lot of gratifying work in the work that we have all done this past year. Many people have said over and over again, it's not the year that you thought it was going to be, but for all of us, it was not the year we thought it was going to be. And as I said, I've been challenged and I've enjoyed every moment of it and it certainly would be my honor to continue to be the Warden for 2021. Anyone else?
I just want to say that at some point I would love to run for Warden. However, this year, I think. Coming up, the continuity of Kathy's leadership is important to the county. It's important to. The way that our lower tiers are responding. And I think that the work that she's doing should be continued because I, I really feel to interrupt it. Would be detrimental. So I would fully support that Warden Burkhardt continue to, to be Warden for next year.
Any other comments? Counselor Javiette?
I would just weigh in and agree. I second the motion as it were.
Seeing no other names, hands being shown at this point. Warden Burkhardt Justin has announced her intention to run for Warden for December 2022. We will proceed with having the inaugural following the November 24th meeting. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Kathy.
Okay, great. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at. 2:58 PM mover and seconder.
Madam Warren, can I just remind everybody to stay on the line after we adjourn? Please, for a few minutes.
Mover and seconder for the adjournment. Counselor Smith and Counselor Richards. All opposed. And that's carried. Thanks very much. See you in two weeks.